If you're going to open the November 20, 2020, we'll have a slip or meeting. It is six o'clock. Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
The listeners will not be presenting their budget this week. We'll do that on the December 4th. There's still waiting to find out more about the appraisal.
Anyone else? Turning on, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of 6:20, 44.
Thanks for watching the approval minutes.
One second. Any comments?
Was it second edited by Alan? Does that change Levi to change in spelling?
Yeah. Levi, I. I don't believe it. It's a different thing. I don't, I don't recommend it. Right, hearing no other stages, all those are favorable.
Aye.
Both are caring. Comments from the community? What are they on tonight? Representatives, we have. The Lemoine County Sheriff's Monthly Report. We'll pass it around and you can take a look at that. He also received a letter from the Sheriff's Department stating that the regional dispatch center budget is going to be held December 5th at the Sheriff's Office at 5:30. They, in the past, the bylaws establish a countywide governance committee called the Lemoine County Sheriff's Department and Crime Service Board. This board is comprised of customers and stakeholders. Traditionally, these representatives have been select persons. In an attempt to reestablish the governance committee component of the Lemoine County Regional Dispatch Center, we're respectfully requesting that your organization send your community administrator and/or select board member as your representative to a meeting. Is there someone that would like to do that?
That'll be December 5th, 5:30?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Hope it is any.
Should I be the pre-? Thank you. I'm sure the car is expecting before you go. I don't care too well.
So Kurt Billings will represent the town at the advisory committee meetings. We received just a request from the United Way for a donation. A town that doesn't really make donations, I guess. If they wanted to, we could tell them if they want to continue for appropriation in the future. Mr. Allen?
Sure.
Um, but. No, it's the.
Make some decisions until the end of last week, third weekend.
Forty days before time. Let's move on to the budget hearings. A lot of murders. Right. Seeing as the project manager is not attending. Would you mind moving on to that one?
The admin work.
Or we could take your admin budget out of the public in the hearing section.
I gave you all copies. So the first line item is select board salaries. I wasn't sure. About proposing an increase. With that, to wait and see, kind of wait and see on salary increase. Normally, we're going to go and get one. Unless the board of that town.
What? Just like that. It's getting weird.
Exactly, yeah. Looking at the budget.
Not looking at it, huh?
No. Um, I put my salary in. It's, it's a drop. Because I don't take insurance, health insurance, and I think that's what the 60-year budget of ours for health insurance. I did include three for the brace, but I'm not committed to it, so you do what you will. I have my healthcare stipend in there for $1,200 because that's, doesn't, that's supposed to be in this budget for Belinda. The, the thing that I, I put in new was for a continuation of a road consultant, which is what the board approved through June 30th. I put in for 10 hours a week and 36 weeks. I talked to Lucian Mendon about this the other day. And 36 hours a week seems reasonable because that carries us through pretty much the summer season, the flooding season. And that seems to be when the road crew is overwhelmed, rightfully so. And, and so I felt like if you still look at the budget and everything, and at the bottom line, we're still under what we were at last year, if that matters. What we had budgeted for by about $7,000, $8,000. Everything else is pretty much the same. I put in for an increase. I doubled the annual paycheck because that's just what it costs this year. It costs $500. And I increased miscellaneous by 200. I did spell out the job description or really the tasks and the reasons for the road consultants in the paragraph below. Just saying that they, this position would be running March through October, which is 36 weeks, 10 hours a week, not to exceed $9,000. And then the mileage for up to 50 miles per week, not to exceed $1,197. This position would assist the road crew with weather-related events like flooding, the highway, anything like that. This position would assist the foreman on the roads during these events. Help the foreman to coordinate the road repairs. We'd go out with the foreman during the event with, for data collection and damage assessments, and then assist with the FEMA reports or with the FEMA meetings. And much like what's been happening now. This position would meet with residents regarding road issues to assess the damage. This is going out for any calls that we get and actually taking a look at the site and then talking with the homeowner. This position would then also work with project management. So the road foreman is asked that he help with these two categories specifically. One is to assist with meeting the public and the other is to assist with prioritizing this project list that I created. And so the road consultant could meet with either the road foreman or just automatically know how to prioritize these, these projects. And then that allows the road foreman more time to be out doing the work. I think it would free up about six, seven hours of road working time personally. And finally, and this was, to me, a big selling point, this position with ongoing would provide ongoing training and guidance. So we I, I think then the road foreman would get the system down and learn. So it'd be like the training for the road. I will find out tomorrow if every, if anything is changing.
So how, how many projects do we have left? Project 24 to conclude?
Um, I think most are done except for at least children's marsh roads.
Has a manual system.
Has a deep learning over. So I don't know. We're still in the process of finding out from FEMA how even if I was still, we go through this first process, process first and then say, identify all the damage and then we're passed on to a solid evaluation.
And what would they do with high wind events?
Basically, we have, we have downed trees, things like that, so.
Um, Lucian wouldn't go out and cut them down.
No, but he might, yeah, we have, we have, we have, things like that. We're going to figure out what our road crew's job is, but if they're out in that kind of, like, there are damage. You know, this position probably would not be working a lot in the winter unless there were some exceptional storms. There's just not a lot to do in winter. I guess this person would be listening when big things happen. Company, yeah, helping the road.
All things. So an idea that I've been having would be someone that could do not only everything you've listed here, but and I'm these are just ideas out loud. I haven't run this by anybody who does work, but a question I've had is things like, you know, heavy storms in the wintertime. We've got the ton truck that sits over there because we've got three guys, three tandems. And they're out and they're doing, they're doing the roads. If we had an on-call, part-time, fourth person who could run the trucks, whether they were tandem or even if there's the ton truck, to take care of the plowing and shoveling here and all of the other properties that we maintain, as well as short roads, for example. Young Road is one that's tough on a tandem. Family Road is one that's tough on a tandem. Charles Allen. What's the one up here in East Elmore? There's a short dead end. Buses don't run for.
Third stop?
That's sure. That's, there's just, there's a bunch of small roads that are currently done with tandem trucks. And to me, in my opinion, that's asking for trouble. I mean, we've done it for years. But I wonder if this position could be expanded to include you know, wintertime maintenance, if the highway department thought they needed that.
They do have to, the maintenance, the handyman does like these lots and then will go out and kind of do the spot putting up.
The intersection, I mean.
Yeah.
Wondering if we couldn't lump that all together into, into one position so that this was still around at 10 hours a week, I'm guessing.
Uncle's would be on call, so mid-month into their two to three weeks.
Yeah. Again, I'm not, I'm not sure the specifics. We're just kind of ideas out loud, but I'm wondering if we could increase efficiency. Increase efficiency in the routes as they stand. Cutting down the overtime hours that the guys are getting or that the guys need to work. And also increasing a little bit of redundancy. You know, Joe, he's got a kid who's running. If that kid is homesick and he can't run his route, what do we do? The guy's already done with two. You might just, there isn't a level of redundancy built in. I know we have a budget item for templating or somewhere.
Yes.
It was, it was miniscule, but if we can borrow from that fund to supplement.
It makes sense for them to have a driving skill if they're going to be doing all the assessment work as well. Or not all of it, but contributing.
Yeah, I mean, just, like I said, just an idea out loud rather than creating two separate positions or overtaxing the handyman. Or, yeah. We own a whole bunch of snowplowing equipment. Yeah, I don't know. I'm just wondering about ways to kind of boost efficiency over there.
Thanks.
That, that deals with the efficiency, but I don't know. I, I see three things here though. You know, then, then you've got that project management type guidance, reporting and getting them on track person. Who wouldn't be a person that's plowing roads? I couldn't see them having that same.
People with less skill set.
Not, you're right. Um, and my I, unless somebody knows something, I'm praying that we're, we're almost done with this flooding stuff.
You mean for in perpetuity or this?
Yeah.
This season.
Makes sense to be the more we exercise the culverts, the bigger problems we're going to have, except for just general washout or culverts in the waters. I mean, we need to keep those culverts clean.
Until we get all the way to the bottom of the stream, we're just taking the problem from the top and moving it to the next one. You know, the ones we just done on West Hill, hopefully they don't move along across Culvert that goes under North Fork at the end.
That has some problems.
We're going to be a long time battling culverts, I think.
Everyone on the classroom is very happy with their.
It's amazing. I'm just thinking that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping there are these events and that you know, Lucian is still around to be on call, but I don't think we should have that as really paid 10-hour position. I'm, I'm hoping they're almost done, other than you know, if he needs to be project manager for some of these last two big projects, this flat 23 is done. They're all done.
And when did the, I shouldn't know this. We just agreed to it last time. We just agreed to this position until the end of the fiscal year? I, I don't personally hate the idea of it, but I wonder if by the time June comes around, what the necessity will be. You know, if not, if the trainings and the, the systems that we're trying to put in place won't exist by then, are we going to need?
There'll still be some about prioritizing. I can, I can tell you, I cannot prioritize because I don't know and I don't think I will ever know enough about you know, how, how to line up the roads. I don't know where they're going to be going and it's, it's difficult to, unless I lived at the garage for a couple hours a week, but, and get them to sit down and share that and then things change, so.
My hope is that by March, through all of this data collection and, and things that you've been doing, that you continue to work on, that will give something, between that and the training that Dylan is, is receiving from Lucian and hoping that he is able to do that, or that position is able to do that on its own, whether he's in it or not.
Those are the two things that I think that have been asked for regularly and I don't know if they're.
So what is the holdup with prioritizing? You know, you can't think about how you're going to schedule things and then being flexible if something comes up. Go on, I mean.
It's just what Dylan's asked help with. He struggles prioritizing and I can't, I can say, hey, those people are tall. And they're urgent, it seems urgent to me, but the longer I've been here, the more I'm able to say, nah, you know, we can get to that moment, we can get to it, but like this culvert needs, you know what I mean? So I don't know enough about what's going on at the garage and what they're planning for the year. All I can say is these projects have been piled in. And then I can add, you know, we did regular planning, but then again, it takes time away from Dylan being out on the road. I would think that in a way, we have a lot of time to do regular planning. But there's still gaps in this puzzle. So I don't know if they're going to be filled. Without, that's why I pulled this down for 36 hours a week personally, I think. I'm sorry, 30 for 10 hours a week for 36 weeks. I think it would be throughout the year, but prioritizing some.
Yeah, I, I like I said, my, my hope, my hope is that through all this increased data collection, we would be able to identify not only troubled equipment, you know, things that are required, pieces of equipment that are requiring more man-hours than working hours than other pieces, not just parts. But same thing with roads, you know, we find that we're spending 100 hours a season grading the pond road and that has a similar traffic volume as town hill and we're spending 30 hours a season. Where are the problem areas on pond road and can we fix them? But I mean, I'm just making things up, but but with, with this increased data collection, those problem areas in the projects, my hope is will line themselves. You know, it will become clear when we punch that into a spreadsheet and look for for assets that are requiring the most maintenance and go, okay, why? Why are we always fixing the road, you know, at the end of Pond Road by Woodman Lane? Why, you know, why are we always there? What can we do so that we're here less?
That's not going to happen in by March or April because that's, that's going to take the data collection and then pulling this into a spreadsheet and that, that's going to take hundreds of hours if you really think about it. And for me, that 30 hours a week with FEMA still, I don't think that, and I don't know that the, the road crew are going to be able to do that. So that's why I'm just not.
Yeah. At the end of the day, this, this proposed budget is, what'd you say, an $8,000 cut? So I mean, it's, even with the additional position, it's money in the right direction.
But as a position moving forward. Do you guys have questions?
No, I, I think this, I think they need to just get the data. If you've got them, it would be more like Michelle's saying, be from the end of April to the, about the end of November. That's when you're going to get most of this data and college looked at. It's just when you're plowing after that and down the trees, a lot of people just coming in, so for that person to go out and be just the road crew or someone that lives in that area clearing it, if it's not on a power line.
That's a, just an interest, a secret or a breath question. Should the board decide to move forward and, and have this position as a budgeted item? And we find ourselves at the end of the next fiscal year or even the one after that, no longer needing that? What is the process of eliminating position? I mean, I know the law's not really lawyer, but do municipalities change that? So we, we could at a note, at another budget hearing, reallocate those funds and remove that position?
Yeah, we could just eliminate the position. We can eliminate the position in any time.
Or maybe maybe once it's done, we could, there may be some projects or something that would need time to some projects with some grants, maybe we could, we'd go for that they could put together something.
There's always, yeah, so it's like pulling Dylan away to go up and, and do any sort of better roads. We'll directly, you're done for us, but do better roads and you need to make sure we put together all that.
So what will Dylan be doing as foreman now?
I think it, there's, there's got to be communication with overseeing the staff and making sure that, you know, the, the, the schedule for the setup is portrayed to the staff. And so rather than having all three staff meet with Lucian and, and figure out the setup, it just makes more sense to have one person meeting and sharing that together. And the difference between the salaries is not that much.
The, the good thing about having something like this, if we do have another flooding season, this would be very helpful.
Well, Lucian does that anyway.
Right, but.
We have a flood, I call him up and he's here. It's not like I've ever paid him for a position. I just tell him I need his help.
He decides that he's physically done and you can put someone in there and have them do this.
Well, I mean, the same could be true then. Isn't it like how FEMA is treating, isn't that how this?
Project manager, something like that. I don't know.
I just look at.
Um, and he was doing things that were reimbursed with FEMA. It wasn't a taxpayer paid position. Me personally, I would like to have further discussion while we have this budget here and will he be here? You know?
Position or?
Oh. Both of them?
Um, today? No.
No, no, when their time is up. Coming?
When they do the highway budget.
Oh, uh, I know Dylan, I can ask the issue.
Just be a good time to ask more questions, I guess.
Yeah, and if that is this road consultant in the right budget, is this better suited to come out of the highway side of things? Or at least a part of it?
I can tell you that Kurt Klein and I had talked about this and we both agreed that that the garage really needs a 10-hour, like maybe help. And so just I would like to see a budget in somewhere. It's, it's just the way it's working is just, there's not enough time for the physicians to, to keep this going.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think where I was getting close, you know, a part-time superintendent, somebody that does to Linda's point, finding somebody with all of those skill sets will be a challenge, but if the foreman is dealing with the day-to-day operations and you know, level of worksite, it deals with long vision, planning, and public, you know, public interfacing. That sounds like a superintendent to me. That sounds like a working super, somebody that runs the platform. Does some slight handyman tasks at all the other buildings to fill the time. And that seems like a compiling of several different positions to me.
Well, it's, um, the road foreman has it here and, and knows what roads need to be done, what culverts need to be done, but it's here and it's got to get out. So it's not like he doesn't have a vision. It's just that intermediate stage, so whether you get 10 hours a week of someone to go and help them create crap their database. You know what I mean? Or but that's a good idea. That person again will not be able to drive trouble.
I don't think so.
As a position like that.
Yeah, yeah, they have a working super.
Yeah.
For them.
Or, yeah. They're the one that writes the grants, they set the schedule, they do everything, but they could be on call and they needed to plow or something.
Yes, yeah.
But mainly they're in the office doing all the work and everyone else is a road crew. Okay, well, hang on. It's not a yes, it's not a no.
Everything else is so.
So the picnic one, um. So, um. I'm kind of torn between the, um. We spend more money because we, we ask for, we got sponsorships in the past to cover this in the beginning and we didn't ask for anything. in the past to cover this in the beginning, and we didn't ask for anything. I don't know.
So there's something to ban too?
Yeah, we had a ban this year, we had, had before. But we had money from sponsorships. The year before I had gotten nine hundred dollars in sponsorships. So there was enough money left over. That, I guess that's up to the board. We call it a pretty picnic and more?
It underdeteled there? I believe.
Two hundred and twenty-five, hundred and seventy-five, maybe some without that. Okay, we'll move on to the library. If anyone else has any other questions on?
Any questions?
Well, Dylan?
Um, no, actually it went down, it went down, I was looking there. Yes, we're gonna use more, um, inter-librarian rather than purchasing books due to our space limitations.
You have a, I can hear it's the equipment.
Yes, our computer is about to die. It's on its way out, and that'll be the biggest part of equipment expense. In your computer.
So I wondered, um, I had heard that Sally was retiring, but then I heard she wasn't retiring.
She's giving us one more year.
Uh-huh.
That's where we're at. Um, we do have someone that is semi-available as a sub, but she also works a full-time job and is only available on school holidays and such.
But do you have a plan for certified librarian?
Uh, the reality is we'll probably have to get a variance and have some local training to be a fully certified librarian, because that's the reality for all libraries in Vermont.
Oh, but, so if someone's gonna get, um, certified or something.
They would have to be like, have some kind of qualifications and then be taking courses towards getting fully certified.
Uh-huh.
And talking to other libraries, that's how many of them are operating. Those are, they're, we don't even have a program for certified librarians.
Really, you know, um, boy. And my hope is that you will put it out to the
Yes.
whole community, you know.
Definitely. Um, what hiring platforms does the town use? Do you use like Indeed or like?
Oh, Indeed.
Yeah, the different hiring, like online advertising spaces for, for physicians, do you know? One that you guys use?
Well, we've been using the paper, report form.
Okay.
What else have you been using as well?
Um, let's say.
Yeah.
Okay, it is a good one.
Yeah, because with, with our, what we've been looking for, they mostly have to be woke residents like the listers and stuff, so there's no sense in putting something out seven days or something, because, um, but, but the librarian doesn't have to be.
You have to work without a chair.
So, um, that you could put anywhere. You could work for the show too, or not.
The only thing I would say is there would be a limited distance because you don't want it coming from my failure.
They don't wanna come from my failure, probably for a part-time position.
It's, it's just the cost.
Oh, wow. If you advertise, then the, the cost to advertise, but, um, you have to include the cost, but it, you, you give a geographic area.
Right, I'm saying, you know, keep it within twenty, twenty-five mile radius. Because by the time they come part-time, they're gonna be spending more and traveling.
Yes.
For someone who might like a career change, you know, um, the, I, I think all of us on the board are putting feelers out with everyone we know, like,
Yeah.
You know, retiring and you love books, come get a part-time job.
Yes, we will be advertising through our report form, our website. At the beginning of the year.
So, um, do you have a sub? Because quite often the library is closed.
The only person we have right now that's trained enough to sub is one of our, um, trustees, Charmel Lloyd. But she works a full-time job in the school system. She will be covering Sally next week when Sally has a couple of days off for Thanksgiving and family coming. Um, but it's tricky. We have not been able to find someone that can just sub spur of the moment.
Well, there was a note on the door today, someone went over there and, um, instead of going for water.
Address that. We will certainly address that. Because. If you're short a lot, it's just being backwards.
Does anybody else have any questions? So you've worked on your programming, you know, for the.
Yes. Yes, we do, uh, that's one is our gingerbread house event. I believe, but it was posted on our website, one of our upcoming events would be. I guess Charmel's been helping us to keep everything updated.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure that.
Oh, that's great, yes. Since you were having struggles right now there.
Yes, Charmel is helping a lot.
Oh, good.
Well, you've been sort of the librarian, but she needs to work full-time.
Yeah. Right.
Have you ever done, um, uh, playbooths? Yes, um, in fact, Sally still does, um, I miss a story hour, but it's comes, comes regularly. Most children are in, um, care centers or there are a lot of stay-home families these days. They just. Most, like I said, most kids have two early parents in there, my child here hopefully can drive them to the library for one hour in the week. We can have one faithful guy that comes. But yeah, our numbers are, as far as patrons, they're definitely down. They haven't come back up. COVID. Struggling with that.
It seemed like you got a lot more once you moved down here.
Yes, I think our adult patrons definitely as came up.
Yeah.
Um, the little ones, yeah, so much.
Well, they get the books at school and food.
Yes. School families that are frequent.
Don't have any other questions, do you? Yeah, thank you, Becky for revising your question.
See, snow guards.
Yeah. Hope that that should help. The snow guards.
Oh, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so the snow doesn't slide off into the deck.
Will be very helpful.
Yeah, I thought it's unsafe too.
Yes.
If you see any, any other maintenance stuff that used to be done, you know, remember that the town owns the building and it's responsible, just let Michelle know.
Okay. We are the one that's actually.
Yeah, she can, uh, work with, um, Bob.
I understand. Um, yeah, yeah, it's dropping out for you though. Thank you, thanks for coming out. Have a good night.
Your packet is the, uh, project manager's, uh, report. He's not available tonight. I, I don't need to read it to you, or do you want it on the record?
It'll be.
Okay. So basically it's giving us an update on, uh, what, twenty-three, um, it looks like there's just three more projects that are waiting to be obligated. Done a fabulous job of getting them done. Uh, we are starting to get money. Every time the project's obligated, the state will send us a form I had to sign up on. So the money's rolling back in.
The school street over been obligated?
Yes, that was done, the obligation before it was, it was done.
Now we just turn it as a. Bill.
They don't, this is small project, it's already.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
About the cobblestone, you know, it's a little bit bad, can you put in?
That is not FEMA, that's, uh, federal aid highway.
It's completed and saved, yeah, that's really good.
But she, he wants to know, is it covered by the federal aid highway? No.
I just wanted to know that it's done.
Oh.
Completely.
Yes.
Uh, there's shouldering, there's still four cones out there. I'm not sure if it's been shouldered around the new baby. I, I haven't stopped, I just, every, I drive by every day, there's four cones.
There's still cones, I wasn't sure if they had, just gonna pick them up.
That could be.
Well, I asked Dylan about shouldering when they paved and
So they just haven't.
They weren't gonna shoulder them. I mean, I thought some places, I mentioned Dylan seemed really dipped down, uh,
Unnormal.
He blew me off.
He was trying to go around and fill with some of the asphalt and he could stick it out in a wheelbarrow or whatever and then spot it, but I don't know if that happened. When they were out there with the pageant, I was out there. The new report, Michelle? Sure, um, so a, a lot of, uh, grants are, are either coming up or we're starting to work on them. Um, we have the, it's a mandatory Vermont municipality road erosion inventory grant. Um, it's a Better Roads Category A grant. Um, the planning commission can write it for us. This is for, by twenty-twenty-seven, state has to have an update or a new inventory that is for reassessment on all the hydrologically connected segments. Uh, so December of twenty-seven, and so the planning commission, uh, can put in for this grant for us, they can get the job done. For eight thousand eight hundred eighty, and our contribution would be seven, seventeen hundred seventy-six dollars. And any additional costs would come from state to Laual County directly. If we choose to do this on our own without and hire a consultant, it would likely cost us about twenty thousand. So I just would like permission to move forward with the planning commission applying for this, this on Better Roads uh, Category A grant.
There was a lot of discussion about it, but did we create a fund last year for grant matches? Question would be, where is, where does the seventeen hundred come from?
On highway, I'd love to.
Fantastic.
Usually all highway grants come from the.
Are you looking for motion in the form? I would love anything looking for.
We have a second?
I'll start.
Any further discussion?
Well, seconded, I'm sorry.
For millions. All those in favor?
I'm in.
Close, so very.
Um, and then we're looking into, again, another Laual Valley Rail Trail grant, but before we can do anything and even get the lease, we have to, as you know, make sure that that's not an archaeological site or, um, it, we have to get clearance from an archaeologist, state archaeologist, as well as the historian, the historic preservation officer. I thought I made it tomorrow with the historic preservation officer, she's gonna walk it, and then I've sent information to the archaeologist, uh, so we'd like to get this done so that we can apply for another grant um, that will be due, I think, the end of December. Um, if you all agree, but we can talk about that later. We should, let me get, um, some money so that we can actually do something with that foundation, uh, clear it out, fill it in, and then maybe do some landscaping, put up some tables, and then create a kiosk. And that kiosk can be a little bit larger so that it can host the maps um, that the rail trail is doing for us. Um, the, I'm sorry, the, the planning commission and the rail trail have a grant to pull together these municipality grants. I'm, I'm sorry, maps, municipality maps. And that's down a little bit lower, um, like in my bullet points. But we'd like to be able to capitalize on some of those funds. So really, that's just a, it's nothing that we have to, there's actually has to be taken. Um, the rail trail committee that's um, talking about the regional kiosk map project, just wanted to both call in the bullet points that they sent us. Um, I think they're gonna want us to think about nailing down a location for posting a sign of kiosk map, and I don't know if we actually wanna order two maps, which would be about three hundred each, because if we do, we want one at the parking lot and then one out at the kiosk on the trail itself. Um, and we don't have to know right away, because since the planning commission is actually doing the mapping itself, we don't have to pay for it, so we don't have to put it in for it right now. They also wanna know, um, they wanna, they, they wanna continue the, the, um, yeah, where, where, what you want to, to put as far as photos on the overall map. So what do you wanna display on top of the feature kiosk as a map? And then do you want any sort of other signage pointing to other businesses in town? I mean, the time meetings aren't just kind of following up on the goal. Um, I might believe it was there. Are there any questions about that grant? The kiosk?
Um, I'm a little confused. So last, we, we approved six hundred sixty for rail trail map signage, what was that?
But then the pricing dropped, so it's the same thing.
So we've already approved.
We have.
So we have to go, three hundred, six, so it's six hundred dollars.
But we could get, yeah, they, the, the price is not yet set fully.
Okay.
But because they're.
But is it the same map?
Yes.
Okay, so you have. Okay, so you have some money.
We might, we approved that, but we might probably get two maps. And we might add one kiosk. Which will try to get the funding to go out.
But for some reason, we could always put them out on our kiosk thing now.
I thought we put one there.
I was just confused if that was a different sign.
No, no.
So while we're here, I was gonna bring it up on the up base, but we're right here. So we approved it last meeting. But we didn't approve where the money was coming from. Now I wanted to go back and revisit that.
Two thousand possibly.
Yes, because it started in the motion. I meant to make it in motion. But we have, because Helena will need to know where to pay for. And, um, so we have two thousand dollars that was sent to us from the Vermont Community Foundation that in April to be used on, um, projects that support community recovery from flood damage to Laual Valley Rail Trail to promote the civil law Valley Rail Trail. And that seemed like an appropriate place to take it out, so if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to make a motion to pay for the six hundred and sixty dollars we approved for the rail trail map signage.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, one second. Coming from the Vermont Community Foundation donation.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, close. Okay.
Um, and then I had, um, we tested these ballots and those two ballots are out, that ballot is out, and there's one out in the lister's room. Um, and so I asked, uh, another guy in Hyde Park if he might be, I thought that might be cheaper, um, actually get those replaced. He recommended, you know, replacing the fixtures and not just rewiring. Um, and it's gonna cost roughly three hundred, it's gonna cost him two forty to get out here and to do an hour of time. Um, plus materials, so three hundred plus materials to replace these. They're, they're unusable, so it's probably necessary to do. It's just, I guess my question is, I don't know how often this is gonna start happening, or do we start piecing it like these? Do we wanna replace them all like we initially proposed with that thousand dollar grant? I mean, things at the front, Vermont Efficiency Energy Grant, or do we just wanna start with new?
Can we replace as much as we can for a thousand dollars?
No, because that thousand is based on a six thousand dollar project and based on how efficient we will be. So the grant will lose the grant. Um, but the grant is based on, in the overall, how efficient we will be. A couple at a time. They're not.
But it's two forty, two hundred and forty dollars to drive the wall pit and replace in one, two. How many more would it be and how much did that start to now?
It's a six, six, it's gonna be.
It'd be eight hundred, that's a number from.
Yeah. Thousand dollar off.
That was to do all, yes.
Yes.
Which in the long run would be cheaper than it peaks from the light.
But we don't really have that in the budget.
We don't have the building maintenance funds.
Don't.
So.
I think we put the ten thousand into it.
We did, we already used some for the spring guards and then you do feathers, didn't you?
Snow guards.
And then the generator.
That was cheaper.
Yeah, well now.
Still nine efforts better than paying fifteen or eighteen.
Right, right. But we can, that's the next, I love it, just as a generator.
Think we'll have to put it into extra budget.
Yeah, I think so too, that's why we're normally.
Pagan or whatever, but it adds three to five percent. Yeah, because they're not gonna do it cheap.
The thing is, it's just one thing to consider, that grant may go away because those grants are doing a lot by year.
And they're not doing us a favor, a thousand dollars, the whole thing is six thousand, we get it back a six.
I mean, these aren't that bad, and the lighting's not that bad. Considering the place I worked in, we went and did an energy budget for the lighting and, uh, we cut their funds pretty low.
These bolts on the end with the replacements that Mike, Michael brought.
Yeah.
We can get it to a color, um, if you want, you, those are warm.
Yeah.
A warm bolt, we can add a brighter bolt too, but they work, so it's, as long as the ballots are continuing to work. The, the bolt replacements work.
Well, it's just like headlights on a car. When this goes, they're all gonna start going within six months. Would be mine. Uh, the ballon? Yeah, those ballots, once one goes, I tell you the age of it. You know, that is a good, that's a wild, eight years, ten, twelve years and they're done.
Yeah, again, my, my leaning, I'd say we, we have to replace them where we came looking at.
Make a note in this coming fiscal year's budget, paying on six hundred dollar expense to six lights, eighty-six for five hundred. Whatever it is. I don't see materials getting any cheaper or leaving.
But I thought we determined that we didn't have to replace them all, we could just put new bolts and.
Or as long as the ballots.
Right, right.
And you have either those rewired, which takes an electrician, and it's about the same amount of time. So every electrician has been telling us, they advise us just to replace the fixture with an LED fixture. Because the rewiring, I guess, takes hours of time. I mean, you can do it on YouTube, but we are not qualified. I've seen that, I've watched the videos, but we're not qualified as electricians, so we can't.
There's a caveat somewhere in, in, what is that, Title Twenty-seven? For, um, maintenance workers employed who are routinely, who do that work routinely, they put, I'll look that up. There is a caveat for maintenance workers employed by a person or business or municipality where they can do plumbing and electrical.
Bob won't touch it, he already told me.
Fantastic. Discussion for another day perhaps.
I say, if it's not broken, don't fix it. I mean, I mean, fix the one that's broken and deal with it when they break.
Yeah.
Well, if it's three hundred shot and, you know, that's to replace two.
Realistically, in that hour, he probably, an electrician probably could get five recidics. He's doing two because that's not anything unbroken.
Yeah, instead, well, to come from Hyde Park, I can call ourselves two and he'll keep to come out and do it. This was just someone I heard back from. Um, and it's the hour and a half time to get here and do this and his assistant's time.
Who is your caller?
Dana, somebody in Hyde Park that brought to me to call. Jordan? That could be it. Okay, Jordan, I think we made it.
But I wonder, well, the reason is Jordan, I don't know if they're getting more.
Right, but it's.
Hundred or something, it's. It's one in the front.
It's not travel.
Right. It's the other one, it's the other one. Cause we need some.
Should we put it in the next year's budget or just lump it along?
I'd like to see how, I'd like to see how the balance, the budget balances out with this, with this plan. If, when the time comes and we have to start filling the budget. Maybe that's the negative job.
And on the more, once we get this replaced, because we have to replace, so just do it now and just piece it now and bring it in.
Batter if we don't do all of them around there, so we could piece it. If we did, one whole room, look at the ballots we have.
Yeah, then you gotta still batter them to put them back in.
Until I can find that thing in Title Twenty-seven that says the maintenance worker who routinely does that work.
The other thing I've heard, you can have someone do it and then have a professional electrician approve it. I think the odds are still in finding anybody that's gonna back up what someone else has done. Although that dude that you used, when you never responded back to my emails, but you made to hers. That was what, Green Mountain? I, I don't recall, but he's right out of Hyde Park.
He's another electrician?
Yeah.
Do you want to send me who is?
I can send you the email tomorrow if you want.
And he just says the rewiring, it's not replacing the fixture?
He's a electrician, licensed electrician. Works by himself.
While I'm thinking about it, Kurt, is, did you get my phone call and are you able to get over to the church? You've got to get some of it's gone, but it's still a full pile of trash over the desert.
I know. I've asked, and I look at it this way, I'm not my druthers keeper. True problem. I hate to say it, I'm not gonna play doctor, mama, daddy. It's her problem. I'm not gonna go clean up her mess.
Are you able to get in touch with her so that we could?
I've talked with her at least twice every week.
She doesn't want anyone going over to clean it up?
I'm not gonna run clean it up. I've asked her what she would do. I guess if you wanna call your grandmother, go ahead. I think that's the only thing you can do.
We just need permission because that's over there, I can go and send something over.
Would have to. I'm not getting into her land, her premises. I look at it this way, good fences make good neighbors. Tend to your side, Will, I'll tend to my side, you'll agree. I mean, you do have the grandmother's number and I'll learn, maybe she can put some heat on her, get something done.
Send her a picture.
Figure that the level of being condemned.
Person.
I have a, she was.
Our health officer. No, it's just a jump.
She weren't really, she was really, I can't respond when that sign was on. It's that her, you know, her grandmother owns on that front.
Well, you go. No. Then you call and you need to be able to.
We don't need any, any motion from the board to just replace these and that's, that's good. Um, I, we can, kind of, you have that purchasing policy and then pass it. Have info. Anything in yellow is still something that might, you might wanna talk about, but I did add at the back, uh, we can't, we can't formalize this until we needed, we needed to add the authorized contractor bullets, which authorized us to develop emergency authorized list. And that's another question, is it for emergencies only, which is my take on it? Or is it a list that we work from, but based on the way the purchasing policies are now, we would have to publicly rewrite it to use authorized on its regular basis.
And I think the whole concept is to have the emergency, otherwise you're not putting it out fairly. You know, it defeats the whole bidding process if, if you're gonna just go by those people.
And I think that the, some of the confusion stemmed a little bit from me. I was viewing it not only as the emergency process, right? Make our response faster, but also limiting our, um, expense when we go to advertise things. If we had a single RFP that goes out every year, RFQ that goes out every year, then we wouldn't necessarily have to post it in the paper. I am definitely on board with not doing that. Because you do raise a good point, if you miss that one RFQ and your chance to get on the best, then you as a contractor that doesn't see the losing citizen, you don't have a chance to bid.
So someone might not want to bid on a cover, but someone might wanna bid on something else. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's like, oh my word, the road just blew out. I need a contractor. Who can I call? You've got a list of people that, and you know they're not gonna gouge you.
Yeah.
And you can use them for twenty-four hours. That's why I didn't know what the last part of this whole thing said about.
Of point number five?
Yeah.
I pulled that from the Belvedere.
It should be, I like when it ended at four, you know, that, uh, after the emergency passes, it turns out the town emergency management team, which can be seventy-two hours or longer, you know? When they got, when they made the road passable or something and nobody stranded. I'm not sure whether emergency management team is the right word, whether it should be the road informant, um. Then it ends, and then you have to put out a real RFP. We can limp along, but people can get out, it's not.
Kind of like what's been happening, we just now have a, we didn't have one such zone, but there were certain people that were called.
Yeah, that's, that's the trouble, it's those certain people that are always called and then it creates problems.
Well, this gives us then the authority to call those.
Exactly.
And then FEMA, we can just show this and then people will not touch it at all.
Could we, could we have an all encompassing term as opposed to emergency management team? Could it be just the towns? And that authority could lie with, we kind of vague there.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, also, it does say here, uh, down in Belvedere somewhere.
I took rope to my stuff. We don't have one.
Belvedere's doing it for three years. I don't like that at all. I don't think anyone's gonna bid on three years.
No, I think an annual update.
That allows new people to get on. Do you wanna start at the beginning and move forward? Do we wanna don't do this, or we get this adopted? In the next meeting? So, um, I don't know if we should call it revise first page, revise or then, it's too old. Has this been amended or hasn't been revised?
My memory of the last conversation was we were going to eliminate the previous one and adopt this one.
But then I had some good thoughts about that, which is, we don't know if you can qualify something and then, and then you use the paper trail. But then I had some good thoughts about that, which is, we don't know if you can go and buy something and then, and then you use the paper trail.
Well, you can do whatever we want, but you've lost history and this. The present purchasing policy is out there. FEMA has it, it's on their website, so. It gets confusing when you, and I've been through this, it's Tom Clark looking through zoning. Um, and trying to find the right one that we want, so it's good to have history to know. So you either need to amend it or revise it. You don't just make it go away.
Are there difference? I, I mean, I think the rule, I guess what each means.
What I was doing.
My gut feeling is this feels more like a revision.
That's what the, yeah, amended means you add it on.
Okay.
The revising means you're changing the wording stuff. I would say revised and that's what you'll see on a lot of our ordinances or something.
They give it.
You know, say. They'll have it, it'll stand on the top and it's revised on this thing. That way it tells somebody there was one before this.
Or then, but.
Yeah.
One that was before, then you track the others.
Yeah.
Um, I guess then on page three, on two, page. Two. You have the major purchases, um. I moved that and there are, this, this is where we are changing or we had talked about changing. Um, the ability of the road foreman to increase. And go up to ten thousand without. Um. Prior approval. If it fits within our budget.
And, and same question I had last time. Are they, so. The way that this is written, it seems like they can spend ten thousand dollars for any line item that has a ten thousand dollar. Budget. Without speaking to us, but they cannot spend. Uh, more than. Right, they can't, even though they have it budgeted, they can't make an individual purchase for more than ten thousand without.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because then you have purchases five thousand and nine, nine ninety-nine, um. And then ten thousand and over, those all say they must follow the sealed bid process and, you know, then we have different. Pictures. But this would allow Dylan then to go and say, you know, there's a repair on a truck or. Something and we can't wait two weeks because he's got, you know, emergency equipment going on.
Just as long as you realize that he might not know.
And. Would be anyway, though?
I mean, no, probably not. I mean, they might have to do, they might have to try to figure out what's wrong. And then they could say.
So, what you're saying is that we should share with Dylan that he's gotta try to assess the situation with any good estimate of value?
We're gonna mean good things, I mean, if he loses something and goes, I think that'll be under ten grand, then.
That's what I'm just saying, it might go over a little. He won't know that.
I suppose that's the fact we can carry on this point.
You know.
I mean, there's no contest that here that's me and. Yeah. They don't consider any part of the process.
Yeah, well, during the reporting aspect of that, like I said, if, if there was something, it was like, oh, I didn't realize that was gonna be another two grand, we can just go, things flat and snow.
Well, sometimes road projects will come in full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can be really big.
Or if they just go over, we did their own part of it. Their culvert. Okay, I'm gonna do it. Um. I have seen, so go down to under purchases, uh, ten thousand to two hundred fifty thousand, the highlighting yellow, um. That, it says in, it. And require a bid in the amount of five percent of the bid price from, from the bidders as well as performance and payment bonds in the amount of one hundred percent. This is in every purchasing policy I have seen and yet. We seem to be opposed to this particular. Segment. It was in our old purchasing policy, but. I thought we decided that it does pose a hardship, especially with the, um, the payment bonds. However, didn't we get in trouble, Linda, when one of the companies did some work and, and then we had to have it redone?
It did, but they redid it, um. You know what, wh- what really makes me, uh. What confuses me is main purchases, the word purchase, because usually when you're doing, um. Big bond or something, you're doing some sort of construction or contract, but you're not buying.
It confused me all along too, but then every, when I look at uses the word purchase because you were still purchasing a service.
I would ask, um. I know that the, um. Engineers gave us a price of when you should do that, so we actually did that for those, all our FEMA projects, which. Came in at a little over a hundred thousand and we ended up taking that out because it was, um. Too much. And, and I forget how much they said was a good, when it was good.
I think over one fifty or two fifty.
We, uh, did use it for both our projects that were around eight hundred thousand and fifty.
Bringing up a conversation that we had now, memory of one, instead of maybe over two fifty, we were gonna require that. In our contract, we had a new contract, so we have major contracts. I'll get that and just apply it here. Um, down below under procedures for bidding, I did add emails because that's just the way it's on. Now you can do closed bids. Sealed bids by email as well, just the way things are operating. Um. And I think you all added last time that the jobs that are estimated to exceed fifty thousand dollars that I may post. Uh, on state's bid site. Next page, I added a standard, uh, the request for all bids and invoices to be itemized for labor equipment, materials and mobile elimination. And separated by those road class. If this FEMA's asking for that now. And it just makes sense to be able to. See how you pay them.
It was that, um, useful information when it's not a payment term. Or is it busy word? I mean, can you use that information?
I'm gonna use it for supposed to be over to apply to that grant for that same type of culvert, so it's very useful for me right now.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be busy, but we're not.
For them.
For them, if we're not gonna actually use that information.
But most of these larger. Are, these are for FEMA.
Yeah, but FEMA's don't wanna let any of this out, so not in the last forever.
It's never coming again. It's gonna be, it'll be gone.
I can see. I can see the bigger engineering projects, it's like, for the, for funding, for getting it. But probably not anyways.
Well, and, and I may, I may be alone in this thought, but I, to the point you just made about losing history. Everything that has been done in the last five years is inside Dylan's head.
Yeah.
No one in this building currently knows, and the driveway culvert was changed at Rockwood Center. You know, Dylan knows, Dylan did it, but we don't.
Right.
And I am a firm believer that the more information we have, the better off we are, the better we can plan, the better we can account, and the better we can budget.
I totally agree, as long as it's useful.
Yes.
It's not really, um, it took gravel, all of twenty minutes to pull together an itemization. I mean, it's, it's, but they had it, they just lumped it in there. So. And that was a big project. Well, you see on the larger projects, um, on the bidding, that it's all broken out.
Well, that's how we ask for the RFPs to be.
Yeah.
So, that's why it's just common, common sense that you would break out your employees to make sure.
So when you're comparing to ordering the brick bid, it's not always the lowest price you can. So they go through and the engineers can make sure that. The prices are kind of in line. If it's way off, then they question. You know, they notice they end up.
We talked to.
Yeah.
Through, through flooding stuff, I remember making a film, it's like, oh, what is that number?
Right.
And then it's just the glaring, you, you know, the time who meets, they came in way under budget, but the time you meet that year, it's brighter than what. And then I know how much it's gonna cost next year, if we have to do a, a paving project in our, so. Need to get it, yeah. Um, and then on page four, we have emergency purchases. Uh, the email subcourt vote and based on the road foreman, we'll get rid of road commissioner recommendations. Um, and that or Michaelton, I can't remember. Uh, the subcourt may award work from annually approved after ready contractor list, which I added. And then I think we already did the, the, uh, after ready, we just dropped point five and then cleaned it up for some of the other tenants. I can read it. Unless anyone has any questions.
So I wanted, you're gonna add, um, in the list of employees designated, uh. Purchasing. Take a road commissioner and have, um, at least the select organization, or you can't buy any.
I can.
Oh, proxy by straw man.
If we can go down, I guess I wanted to get those two. I do have a little bit of sand, uh, RFP out. It's gonna be her next. When they, when I click the, the, to this town. Uh, that's for another three years.
Does this one include a, uh, spec on the sand?
Uh, well, Dylan can only get me, even when they, sand and three quarters don't mix, blend. And, um. I've been talking to other people like in gravel, kind of. As a different, like, Minot was in, Nick Minot was in, talking about it, so I. I'm gonna have to start chatting because I heard my ears worked up, um, and they say that they like that as well. Um, and, and. Dylan and I talked about it. And it's better we get it, so we don't have to truck it as far, you're saving money at time, so you save gas at time. So if the blend isn't quite up to our standards from one company, but you don't have to travel as far, he can just buy a three quarter inch stone. Add it to it and then we get more. And, and that's kind of what he's been doing, but it's for the same price as that extra trucking. It's in his mind, I haven't done the numbers, but in his mind, that kind of makes sense.
What's this gonna be useful? When I wrote it? You're gonna put three quarter inch stone in the sink here?
Yes.
What size stone? And how many windshields will we need to be firing?
That is, that is part of the question, but it's also that, that, um, the sand is just.
That's also industry standard. I can't talk to any of the other towns in this area contracts.
Used to be just. What do you call it? Sifted, yeah. You need the stone, you need the stone to begin to throw it above the back so that you, the sand stays. I don't mind T-stones sometimes, but three quarter?
That's what we've been getting for years.
Smaller than that will get into tire treads and will throw further, that three quarter. Unless you've got a big blocky fire, like on my white truck, the stone isn't gonna get in that. Yeah, big trucks will leave them. Yeah, stay back. Well, I'm staying back.
No, I know you can.
Windshield.
Oh, yeah.
And I hate to say, how many windshields is our insurance gonna cover? Would we have that? Because I know Sal was headed up to. Six or seven windshields a year. It's their insurance to cover. My opinion that our insurance shouldn't cover any windshield unless you can prove that you weren't following too closely. And you weren't. And then it's gonna be an argument because you've got a dash cam. That's what I'm saying, they argue, you know, maybe you wanna argue, but when you get a dash cam, that's what I'm saying, insurance is covered. That's just my, I mean, like I said, I say this all the time, I'm one-fifth of a, of an opinion here, so.
Um. Let me move on. So the union, the, the road contract, the union contract, labor contract is, uh, up for negotiation. And, uh, we are meeting on December second, uh, Chan, Linda, Larry and I will be meeting, he's, Larry said we knew about. Um. Larry said he should send that around and that as soon as he gets it pulled together, but he and Chan have been chatting. He's gonna pull together, post one contract that we can start talking about on December. Um. The catch paving is now done for East Hill and Town Hill, they, uh, they did the North Pole cut. Catch paving after, um, Jim already completed the culverts. And work at Hines Road is still ongoing, but that's pretty much the work for FEMA. Twenty twenty-four, I think it is. Any other things are done? Except for East Hill, we wanna do. Two culverts on East Hill and two on, three culverts on East Hill and two on Marsh for hazard relief. And finally, uh, we have, uh, a, we had a. Insurance claim for West Hill Rose. Um, a resident hit a pothole, uh, and broke a strut. And, uh. It, it's all pretty much outlined, but the, um. The resident claims that the, the potholes are not being. Uh, managed and, um, it's funny because the first day this resident. Reported the pothole, we went out that day and they fixed it. Um, and so we had no prior reports because I had been. Since August first, I've been reporting on spreadsheets, any reports that you get from residents about road conditions. And, uh. So the insurance company that Fuma leases kids in town is, is, you know, like, they just wanted. Total approval to. To deny it.
Have you ever heard of their, uh, Dylan's that before? That they would like our approval?
Uh, do you have, I have the town's approval to proceed forwarding expansion, or if you have any comments and suggestions? I don't know if they need a motion, but they just wanted.
They wanna motion to allow them to deny it?
I don't know that they need a motion. She just asked for, if she has the town's approval to proceed to the title.
What I would like to say, so the rest of it, we haven't dealt with, now they insure on the same, I like that.
Oh, I'd like them to play it.
Where, I guess I'm making a break here, where on Rock Hill was the, was the?
The intersection of West Hill and.
Oh, where that curve cut is around, what, sixty feet wide? Our average is around seventy. Just checking. Well, that comes back to the same point, if you're driving, in fact, in the road conditions. Our standards say that we have to keep a car or keep a road passable by, you know, an average passenger car without any kind of extraneous and. Spirited driving. I mean, I mean, we have a member of the board that lives on that road, are your, your stress okay?
Yeah, um, the words quite, so it was, uh, in pretty rough shape for a long time, but I was patient because it had. But I was patient because it had to do with the flood. Um, and there were a lot of potholes, but they were found further where you s-. The final little hilling up to go up by the hex, the one, you couldn't even find a place to go for quite a while. There was no place to drive, but it wasn't at the end of the road, but it was nasty.
Is it less than that? I mean.
It wasn't less than, it was holes. But there were, you know, usually you can find a path, so you couldn't find a path after a while.
And again, we.
You said it was bad, huh?
It has not been ported, yeah, so.
And, and damage was fixed the day it was reported.
Yeah.
I mean, three weeks ago, the Gulf Road, scared of it, about fifteen was pretty rotten. Took you time, you were okay. Yeah, drive in condition of the road. In all, and say, hey, sort of means a bit to you.
In fairness, the resident said that there was an oncoming car and they had to move over. Um, and hit its, hit a pothole in the process, but we're probably, I mean. Again, the road did not get rewarded, beaten down, and so is it our, I don't know whose responsibility it is to actually. Go out and assess the value, the, the state of the road, but. I don't think, I haven't read that anywhere that it's.
Well, before I wanna make any comment, I would like to really verify where that pothole was, I guess. Um. It doesn't say anything on here.
Well, it says that they extended the damage of the intersection of West Hill Road and North Pole Cut Road.
Wow.
On number one.
That didn't seem too bad right there.
It's just what I'm reading here.
So I guess I'm gonna say that, um, you can tell them that we received it and. They are, um, curious of why, um. Why it's up to us.
It may have just been her turn phrase. I don't know.
Yeah. As we can't decide whether, we, we, I don't, I can't say whether we should.
I mean, if the person got asked about it. But even still, I'm, the Lindas' point, that's not for us to decide. If they have an issue there, they can take it up at the LCT.
Right.
I just provided everything factually that I could provide. That's how we made the, I don't know how they made it into an issue, but this was the back and forth, so. Okay, absolutely.
We're confused. We received it and we're confused. That's our response.
Right. Thanks for involving us.
That's me.
Uh, you mentioned something about a generator.
Oh, you're right. That's under, um. Oh, right. So, yes. So it's, I think we talked about it last time, the generator cannot be repaired. Um, so it needs a new engine. You know, it's, it's gonna cost two thousand sixty-four dollars for the new motor. Um, the lead time, uh, and if you recall, it's about eight thousand, eight to ten, four eighty-one. So, and this generator has less than a hundred hours on it. So they recommended we replace the, um, engine. They're not charging us for the service cost. We do have, we did get the twelve, uh, one thousand hundred and sixty, sixty dollars back from Workfield. They wouldn't give us the rebate, the refund on the, um, five hundred forty that they charged for the headers. Um. So we have the twelve sixty sitting in the header that, of that, we can put a thirty-five zero for the generator.
Hopefully we remember that for a very long time. If they wouldn't give us back the six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that's, that's gone towards headers?
To repair, putting on the headers, yes. Well, it's before we move the, you know, before this is.
And then it's, they said, why didn't you test it? Why didn't you test it? And they're like, oh, they just replaced them.
Sure.
We didn't have a typical blue problem.
That's fine. I'm glad that they kept, hopefully that was right. I just hope that the town remembers that for a while. Uh, I, I would make a motion that we do move forward managing places and. I'll second that. But at least we got twelve hundred and twenty-two.
So we have, can we have a set first? You said all of them in favor?
Aye.
Close, the period.
And when do they believe we can do this, or?
So, I have a problem tomorrow and, um, they estimated the time is seven to ten days to order the engine, but they know that we have priorities. She's gonna put us on the schedule for the maintenance or for the, the, when I have tomorrow.
But you should also tell her this is an emergency staging.
She'll put us on the schedule tomorrow for seven to ten days, and then those keep rescheduling, but in an emergency time, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Pleasure.
Because seeing how the school does not have a generator.
They wanna.
Well, it really ruined, uh, the computers.
Are they not on, um, search press?
They are, but, um, that, all that networking from losing the power and everything.
Oh, ours.
Yeah, 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 you're.
That, that route.
It was a mess for, for a week.
Still is.
Yeah, it's still nice.
I do appreciate it.
For what?
He is.
Okay, it's getting late. Well, let's move on. Um, you're all set, Michelle, and thank you. Thank you for your work. We were supposed to have comments on the school street bridge. Basically, um, I sent it. We discussed it last week, but our refresh from memory, uh, pre-reading the email. Basically, they need, the state needs to know if, if the town is okay with. Three, March second, two thousand twenty-six to September twenty, two thousand twenty-six. For the school street bridge closure period. Uh, they had to bump it up because of changes with the wastewater funding deadlines. They just wanted, have any comments, um? I had emailed you on a schedule, on the instruction schedule. How was the board fine with that?
The sooner the better.
Pardon?
The sooner the better. I'd like to see now.
So I'll email and tell what the comments were fine. The other thing I have for you is, um, looking for authorization to sign this utility, um, agreement. And that is basically, um. We are constructing a four, four inch sewer force main that will be attached to the new bridge. And associated work is to find in the project plans and specifications. It will cost, uh, the town. Sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, because it's not part of the bridge work. I have confirmed with, uh, the state of Vermont that it's covered under the grant.
You're starting right.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure. And so I'm just looking for a motion to allow me to. Sign this.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
One second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Alan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so fair.
You're up.
Yay. Uh, so the grant that we applied for, the energy resilience. Talked about smart thermostat, started, talked about solar, uh, talked about insulation and weather stripping around doors. We were awarded that. Uh, we got the, the full, the full thing. And we need to sign, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred fifty-one and thirty-six cents. Have that money to. Do all the things we talked about, so that's super exciting. That has to be signed by the sixteenth of December.
I don't know that we need any authorization. It's just because you had already voted. The, the grant. To apply for the grant. Michael's the signature on that.
And you will go and start putting things out to bid. When, when would they expect us to get the money? Do we prepay? Most friends are like that today anyway.
Yeah, I haven't read that deeply through it, but I believe the best, with the best case.
Do we have a year up until next December?
Again, I haven't, I haven't looked at it.
Does Michelle have a topic to do?
I can't.
It'd be nice if you could get the installation in.
It'd be a great job for the winter for some, I'm proud of her. See you inside more.
Yeah, okay. It's all right. And there's no town match.
Anything else? So you're gonna follow through with Michelle and I'm gonna. So I was noticing that our January, our slug board meeting is falls on January first this year.
That's not a problem. Come on, work the ladder, me. I know you're paying for the January first holiday, so what? You know, it was made a shutdown, so we never got paid. You know, the granite sheds are closed for a month, so. That's what happened.
Why?
Depends on how many, how many ones you want to do, but.
If anyone.
The way.
Don't want that.
That's like, I feel like we still got. We'll be, we'll be in trouble, we're speeding, we're struggling, we're holding. Yeah.
So, um. Do you wanna meet on, uh, that Thursday, um?
Is the room open? If it's the first Thursday, no, it's the second Thursday, it's the.
Yeah, I think it's open on the second. Or you want to meet the eighth, the fifteenth? It's your pleasure. I mean.
I've gotten all.
Do you want the next day or do you want the next week? And then that would mean two in a row. Um.
Since we have the budget coming up.
Yeah.
Town meeting and everything that is on the fourth, let's request the second.
I think going to the second, then you wouldn't have a shift to the other two.
Yeah, I'm buying the second.
We might end up having to come back on the twenty-second again. I mean, we've done that before. Just because, uh, we have to have the warning approved and signed.
If any appropriation.
The bit of, then, right, when is that deadline?
January also is five months, yes.
Yeah.
And then roll it to second and third Wednesday. And it's how much here? The second and third, I'm in studio.
Larry should make it the second and fourth.
Oh, I thought January second, Thursday, January second?
Um, no, I mean, I gave them the option of January second or January eighth.
I'm doing third of the bed.
Not to be though, because the fifth is too late for the town report to get into.
Yeah, the fifth is too late, but not the fourth.
But do you have a meeting on the fourth? If there's a meeting.
Busy, they can meet in hall.
We all agree.
The western group.
Right, well, we'll make it the eighth. Is that what we're gonna do?
So, I'm hoping then, eighth and what, the next, and the following week?
Um, probably. I think we'll plan by year, probably the eighth and the fifteenth.
Michelle says she likes the second. I don't know, I think I've missed that.
The trouble is, it's like so dead. Nobody does anything over Christmas. We've, yeah.
Yeah.
When.
This must be happening, you know, this is.
Um.
Person that had to meet.
So you want January, uh, uh, eighth?
Whatever the board wants is fine with me. I'm just telling you, we might need to meet briefly on the twenty-second too, but you wanna meet Wednesday, the eighth?
And then meet again on the fifteenth?
Mm-hmm. And maybe the twenty-second.
Does that make a motion or anything?
The issue, you have to change it on our. Website.
Yeah.
That's all you have to do, like, which is.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Michelle, do you want to do anything for warning?
Your website would have to be changed.
Website, publish anything?
No.
Just put it in the website.
Because it's a break from routine, right, so.
Right.
I don't get a warning.
Front porch form would have to be updated.
Well, if anyone thinks we're gonna meet on January first, I can probably just reschedule. So, um, um. Last year, you authorized, uh, employee, we gave the employees pick cards. Thirty dollars apiece. Um, is that something you wanna do again?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We put the money in the select board budget, not in miscellaneous. The board is disauthorizing, then we do that, Michelle?
Okay.
Um. My updates was where the money was gonna come from the ground floor and, um. I wondered if it wouldn't help on the agenda to just, uh. Somewhere put table discussion, so in the future, so we, um, don't forget them forever.
I have them in the minutes.
Uh-huh.
Do you want them actually then? So, do you want me just to go back through the minutes and just? So, do you want me just to go back to in the minutes and just always bring up any table discussions?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, otherwise then I forget about it too. And then I remember, so one of the table of discussion is the forest bridge insurance and.
I have that information. Revolution's going out tomorrow or Friday to check that, I have them out, we're. Address waiting on a piece of paper. Maybe go out on the next.
So then maybe by the next meeting, it's on there, we'll be able to bring it back up. Whatever way you think is that we can remember and if things that don't fall through.
Under updates or for. This is what's in that where you.
Anything else?
Is it possible for Michelle to find out if they're ever going to spend any of her money for that? Generator at the school?
Yeah.
It would be nice to get the money back.
What is his name, he's Joe, he used to. He is the maintenance person for Memorial. The whole supervisory.
It's south, so, it's southwest, it's southwest supervisory.
Joe, so he would, just ask him what the status is with the money we gave him.
Because that was what, twenty-five K?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? I mean, we could use it if they're not going to, yeah.
That's the fifteen K for purchasing the generators?
Yeah, we gave them for our money.
Parcel fundings.
So those ones are already clean to us, we already transferred those to them, anybody keep them to deadline or anything?
We didn't give them a deadline, but it's been over a year.
Well, I don't think that's been a while. I thought they were going to do it this summer.
And it wouldn't be nice if they spent it on something else when they said it's what it was for.
Right.
Again, because. Unless we've been a month to the wall, let's do that. If they do something like that. I mean, if that's allocated.
We don't know that.
No, but I'm just saying, it would be nice to know that's.
What's going on with the generator, the money we gave you tomorrow?
Nice to know it was backed up, so if it was.
Our generator broke? Sure could use the money if you don't, if you're not going to use it.
I mean, fifteen K, we could fix our lights.
Add then some.
Yeah, but I mean.
I can't use generator.
No, I, I just want our lights. Well, and according to the MRF grant, we're going to have a battery backup, we won't even need a generator.
That's, that's why it's better to just, you know, every time, just get the new engine.
It would come in handy in the old schoolhouse if you grab it, but it's. Yeah, I don't know that I would ever have the key for, for moving, but. It's always like, the way they've got things designed, it's going to have to be moved. Move, yes, but not re. Well, that's not discontinuing. It would be nice if it comes down to it, if they put it into account or. Stills, on stills. Well, trust me, four foot still would occur.
Your motion to a German?
I'll make that one.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close?
Okay.
Pairing.